Wow, I'll call the meeting to order and I would like Fred, would you lead us off into the.
A pledge of allegiance to a flag, United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Wanted to see through. Thank you Fred and everybody. As normal, we always talk about the safety and if there's a problem in the building on emergency, we go out the front or the back. We've head across the street towards the Methodist church, gather at the sidewalk and we make sure everybody's out of the building that way. So the meeting's officially open. Next week, we will approve the minutes for last month.
It says none on the business.
Soon we're gonna have them in time, sir?
Might have one set if I'm wrong.
Okay, well then we'll approve what's available. How's that? No, I know, I remember she said that. No issue, just making sure that reading it off the way it's supposed to. Under new business, we have Imperial Deo Farm LLC Lot Line Revision, 112 and 114 South Street. The review status is the application and sketch plan was circulated to the board. They're gonna pull that up so we can see it. Thank you. Great, you can come on up here and talk a little bit to it. And turn it so you can speak into it so you don't have to stretch your neck out. Thank you. Just say your name again and so we know who you are.
Michael Morehouse and I work, I'm a land surveyor with Men and Bach and Eggers.
Okay.
And so, yeah, this is, it's two existing parcels already, two existing homes on it. It's owned by family members. And they're gonna kind of like reconfigure, it's almost like a swap of like reconfiguring it. You're going to lot, 2.4 wants to add, you know, the 0.19 of an acre to their section where the garden is. And then they wanted to reconfigure their line to pretty much cut off the back of 2.321. And it's kind of just, you know, make that the smaller lot. It's kind of like they're reversing what they have. So, yeah. Yeah, yup, that's the existing layout right there currently. Except that's gonna be doing it.
So you're just a lot line revision totally.
Yeah, septic, all the fresh couch, all wells are in and everything like that. Yeah, reconfiguring those lines.
Great. Is, anything from staff? Nothing? Nobody has anything? Alright, great. So what do we do? Set a public address for next month? So it would be for October, right? So that's what we'll do next month is we'll set you up for October.
Okay, great.
Easy enough. Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys. Have a good night. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda under new business is Harrison Barrett. I hope I'm saying their name right. Okay, special use permit, 30 Grand Street. Review status, application and plans were circulated to the board. Come on up and speak to your application.
Yeah, this is a 30 Grand Street and I bought it last year. And there's a, you know, it's a pre-existing supplemental apartment. I don't know what to call it.
Accessory apartment?
Accessory apartment, yeah. And it's right outside, it's got a separate entrance. And I guess it's been there for the length of time that my house has been there. It's a pretty old house.
So is there anything in the records that show that it was an apartment or is this, no? It's a single family. So the apartment's in there and how long's the apartment been there? You said.
I mean, I, the house is 100 and 150 years old, I think.
Yeah, I don't think they had accessory apartments back then.
Well, the steel steps look pretty old on it. So I thought it was there existing. But anyway, it's, I was wanting to use it as either an Airbnb or maybe to get a good tenant in there to help me out with the mortgage.
Well, so what is your intention? You just gave us an ambiguous desire. I don't know what you're looking to do. You said maybe an Airbnb or a necessary apartment. Which one?
Well, I would prefer a good tenant.
So you don't want an Airbnb?
If I, if it was up to me, I would get a good tenant in there long term.
Do you live in the main room?
Yes, it's my house, yeah. So if I can't find somebody, then I don't know.
What's his application state? I think I remember this one the other day.
Is this the one that doesn't have a kitchen in the?
So you're telling us what you want. We're gonna go to staff and have them speak to it right now. Okay, so we'll have them speak to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is the drawing we got. It shows kitchenette, bath, bedroom.
I would love to say that I agree with you, but I don't see a drawing here. It's really, I mean, I'd do a prints all day.
So we told them that and they went to get an engineer and this is what was given to us.
It's better, thank you.
That doesn't show a kitchenette.
It does not.
Yeah, so there's a, there was a kitchen when you first walk in. It's just, it's an electric stove with a hood.
Listen, I don't want to be a jerk here, but I'm gonna say something to you. I don't see a kitchen.
Okay, I mean, we want to, we could bring up the.
I don't want to see the old drawing. We need drawings that are stamped. We need intention so that we can log it in our records in the town so that we know exactly what's there. Because as you said, it was a necessary apartment forever. You think, well, we don't know that. We have no way of determining that. But once you get a formalized drawing stamped by an engineer or an architect, then we could take that and we could put it in the records and that we know. So when you're gone, if Charlie buys your house a million years from now, then he knows that that has an apartment that's there because it's stamped. It's something to prove it. So right now, when you're telling me you see a kitchen, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just telling you the difficulty I have myself trying to understand what does you have. There's no kitchen. Okay, it's not telling me anything here. So a accessory apartment would need a kitchen.
Yes.
So that drawing, you could take back, have your engineer draw it so that we know what you're applying for. That's my intention. Maybe the rest of the board would like to interject. Dave, do you got anything else you'd like to see?
Well, it was more about the discrepancy between this drawing and this drawing.
Yeah.
This drawing, there's also a deck, exterior stairs. There is an application, Sarah, for STR. So there is an application in for STR. I don't think we've done the fire safety inspection quite yet. So there's a separate application for STR. So kind of nailing it down would probably be helpful.
That's why I said you gotta tell us really what your intention is. I mean, you can, we can say that you want to put a parking lot there or somehow. We don't know. You gotta tell us what you're looking for.
Okay, so can you go back to the other one? So if, if he just adds the kitchen, the kitchenette exactly where it is and gives you the same exact drawing with that sketched in, is that what you're asking for?
I'm asking you to have your engineer interpret the law and what's supposed to be there. Give us the drawing. I'm not gonna tell you what to do. I could tell you to draw decks and pools and everything else on there. It's not, it's not up to me.
Stove sink out, yeah, just add the kitchen.
But is there a deck on the, on the house there?
According to the sketch drawing.
There is a little deck when you go outside, yeah.
That needs to be added as well.
Okay. And understand what we're saying. There's that and then there's the other drawing.
That deck there now or you're planning on building?
Yeah, you could see it.
The deck is set there now, he's saying.
Yeah, it's always been there.
So the deck right here?
Yes, exactly. You go up those stairs, there's a deck, you go inside. It's half, you know, it's half the second floor of the house.
Oh, there's a second floor on it too? Or is that the whole apartment?
That is the second.
It is the second floor.
Yeah.
Actually, Dave, what actually does he need to come back? Obviously the kitchen.
Yeah.
Yup, so another question my office had was the requirement for the drawing to, excuse me, one second. Be measured from the exterior in. I don't know what these measurements are. And again, not to, not to be nitpicking, but your board has been very particular about getting, you know, the correct pieces. Just so we don't set precedent down the road. Now the build, the space in general is way under what we would typically, you know, maximum we would allow. So I'm comfortable with that, but you know, that's, that was one of the questions we had because, you know, obviously this board has been particular about making sure all the details are built in.
So just, I'm just to help, just to make everything clear. So the kitchen, square footage. Is there anything else that he would need on your end that he would?
Yeah, I would, I would encourage them to put the deck on. You know, so could we, you count that in towards the square footage typically? Any area accessible, you know, specifically for the unit is something you've counted in the past. So the deck isn't very, very big.
So the drawing has to go on the deck, I guess.
Yeah, I would put the deck on.
So I just want to ask a question. So an engineer knows what he has to do in order to have an accessory apartment, right?
It's in the code.
It's in the, that's my point. It's in the code. And we have a drawing that says this, which is a pencil copy drawing. And then you have an architect's drawing. Marry the two together and tell us what you're doing. I, we're not gonna sit here and tell you, and we shouldn't Jerry, say this is what you need to do. We can help you, but we're telling you.
Trying to help him. I just want to know what the.
We're helping you by saying that. Your engineer should bring a piece of paper to you and say, look, you're paying me a lot of money to know what the law is and what the code is. We're presenting that to the town board or planning board in order for them to interpret what you're looking to do. If we stood up here and we're gonna tell you, put a deck in, put a door, I want to know the egress, I want to know all that stuff, we can tell you that, but you need to show us. And his guy should know it.
He's not an engineer. The engineer should have done that.
Like, this is my point. And that's what I'm saying, Jerry.
And I don't want to beat up on him because he's not an engineer. You're not an engineer, sir, right?
But that is why our planning director is available to anybody who has those questions so that when it comes here, it doesn't waste the board's time on us interpreting a drawing that is a sketch drawing to a drawing that doesn't even match the sketch drawing. So now we're left wondering, what is it you want to do?
I just want to make sure that it doesn't waste everybody, I mean, not just our time, but his time too.
Creed.
And come, that's why I asked him, anything else he might need, so when he comes back, he has all those issues, you know?
Well, there's that. And then he has an application for an STR going on at the same time. But the request was there in order for you in order to do the inspection. That's my point. So we still, he's up in here. He's got two things going on with the property. Pick one, get us the drawing, and then we can interpret it. Right. Fair enough? Not being difficult, sorry. Really, it's just, it's one of these things where we, we've seen this and we're like, okay. And we are pretty much sticklers for a lot of people. And we want to make sure that you're getting what you're, you're paying for. So you came here today and under the assumption that what your guy gave you was gonna be something that we could present or you could present to us and we could make a determination. Well, we can't.
Yeah, it's an excellent start. That's what we have.
It's a perfect start, but they need more.
Okay, I would suggest possibly if the board was amenable, if he could get that to us by next Thursday, come with that. And then we could do a public hearing for the following month.
I have no issue with that.
That way we're not, you know, that way there's no, there's no time gap.
Yeah, I could do that. That way we're still not wasting your time, but we just want to make sure that your guy is.
Will you do a separate public hearing for the short-term rental?
We would. So, and again, this is, as you said Scott, this is not just for you as a board, but also for the applicant. If, if you wanted to sell your home down the road, having this locked in detail-wise, much to your benefit.
Yeah, it's a lot easier referring back to something that's been stamped as opposed to, in all fairness, the pencil drawing that you had there.
Yeah, the only thing I would like to add is just to make sure that there's sufficient onsite parking for this use.
This planning, okay. Okay.
Alright, I'll be back next week. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good night. Who is the engineer on this show? Dave? So we, you don't mind me, I wish I could see that. So is he, is he familiar with us? Did he call you at all for anything? Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda. Men Fine Art Logistics Incorporated amended site plan for 50 Talk Drive. Review status, the application and the plans were circulated to the board. You're the building that had the artwork in it, right? Yes, I remember now.
Well, there's no artwork in there yet.
Well, it will have.
We're gonna work on that.
Yes.
So yeah, I'm not sure what you, what, what do you need from me?
Just speak, just speak to what it is you're doing again so it's publiced here.
So we're trying to purchase the property at 50 Talk. We would like to open it as a deep art storage or deep storage facility for fine art. That's currently zoned for industrial, but not, light industrial, but not for warehousing. So I'm just trying to get approval before I buy the building to actually be.
This is the old Kansas matter, and it was no changes. You're gonna still use it.
There's no changes. In fact, the site plan, as you see up there, is the property as it is. Again, the reason why he's here isn't so much site plan as it is change of use.
I remember that.
Right, so this isn't, the building isn't really being altered. There's no, there's a reduction in overall traffic. You know, it's, to me, it's a much less intense use. Nevertheless, because it's called out in our use table, he has to appear. I would, in my opinion, just as an advisory piece, I'm very comfortable with what he's got. I'm very comfortable with what he's doing. I would encourage the board to consider public hearing so that we can get him going.
I think that's where we were at last month anyway.
Is this the one where you had some sort of changes in definitions of light industrial or that?
No, no, well, no, that's a different animal. But so there was a light industrial use in this building and that was codified in our files. He's changing it to a warehouse use. There was a piece of the building that was warehouse before. But nevertheless, again, again, for the applicant to solidify it for him.
And there was another thing. I think somebody wrote sprinklers or something. Were they doing something of that?
Yeah, so the building, he, he, he'll do what he needs to do. The, this board doesn't need to worry about sprinklers because it's in the, it's in municipal water and sewer.
Gotcha. Anything from you, Christian?
As long as there's no proposed changes to the exterior on the site, we wouldn't have comment unless installing a sprinkler system is gonna require a larger water service.
It has a sprinkler system in it.
Oh, it's already in, okay.
Somebody asked that last month, I remember. I don't know who. Somebody asked that last month, I remember. I don't know who it was, somebody mentioned it. Yeah, I just wanted to make.
We'll basically just be demoing out the interior, making a big empty box, filling it up with storage racks and putting art in there.
Okay, great.
Is there, is, is that a building occupied now and being used for anything?
No.
How long has that been empty? No, it's the old county's mayor tied.
Yeah.
It's, uh.
It's been a couple of years. Yeah, but it's been a couple.
I mean, we, I know we started looking at it last summer.
Yeah, Dennis was, but this and that.
Yeah.
Not too much, but we just continued to use, cause he was doing this and that in there.
Yeah, so I don't see any issue. We, um, next week we can set a public hearing for this. You, you did say something about maybe doing something to the loading dock.
Uh, yeah, we might, we might, yeah, we might have to put in a hydraulic lift, or, or maybe there's two small loading docks on the side.
Yep.
Maybe it, just cause a lot of the stuff we move is very tall, maybe we have to like raise a door or something. That's all in debate. That's basically like whatever the most cost-effective approaches.
Yes.
Yeah, there's two loading docks on, what's the left side there? There's like the one at the far top left corner, and then there's a little one you were just over, and then there's a roll gate on the back door, but the roll gate is like, it's real high to me, so it won't work for a truck, I don't know. And so it would be, in the beginning, probably two box trucks a day, uh, because we plan on pulling a lot of inventory over from our Poughkeepsie spot, fill this up. And then, um, once it's full, it's probably one or two. Yeah.
Yeah, I have no issue. I think, uh, the board inclined to set a public hearing for next month. Next week we'll do that.
Perfect. So I should be back, so I win?
Did we just say twenty-third?
Twenty-fifth. Ninety-third, twenty-fifth, twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay. Then is there anything I need to bring, or?
Just yourself.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
That's at seven o'clock, that meeting, so. It's at seven o'clock.
Okay, thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Take care.
I know you said it pretty good.
Under Old Business, we have Fjord Vineyards LLC Site Plan 9W. That too was, um, site plan was circulated to the board. Do we have that?
Do.
The applicant? He's the client, huh?
I'll do it.
So.
I can answer any question?
Sure.
Um, yeah.
Do you wanna come on up and sit here? You can sit up here with him if you like. Cause we're gonna pick both of your brains.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So you're gonna start it?
I guess I will. So, yes, I spoke to Patty, uh, before she went on this extended vacation, which I cannot believe she finally took. Um, very disappointing. Uh, so, if you recall, um, the, the previous incarnation of this, uh, the tasting room was sort of over here a little bit, um, in order to keep this under an acre of disturbance. Uh, the tasting was, was set over here, covered patio in the back. Um, they have, uh, I believe Hudson Land Design working on the septic.
Okay.
So that'll be a commercial-sized system. I don't have that detail yet, but.
What's he swapping out?
I'll, I'll just talk about it loud. Um, uh, the parking, um, this is the area of disturbance in the green here, um, a little sort of mound area. Um, the lane is in, um, and so, uh, and. Yeah, so we have a, a letter, or email from DOT with a conceptual approval. Um, Sue, can you help me with that, where we are? Do you remember? Yeah, me either. Um, so yes, uh, that discussion is, is being had. Um, you know, I, Patty forwarded me an email a month ago, maybe? Must be a month ago now, um, with the guy from DOT who does the, you know, the, the, uh, the state cuts, that he was, you know, it's easy. Particularly in this location, there's great line of sight, um, from this location. I mean, Charlie, you know.
Yeah.
It's sort of right down the end of Mac, right? So, that's what I know now. Um, what I would, uh, was talking to Paul about the other day, um, and I know the applicant has a grant, um, pending um, uh, for which they could use a negative declaration. Um, I don't know of anything else here, um, that would trip through our, our review of Seeker. Um, the area's under an acre, uh, there will be stormwater sediment erosion control. Um, the septic, as I said, was being designed. Uh, DOT's, uh, copacetic on the cut to date. Um, there are no, uh, large events like weddings planned. Uh, we heard that from the applicant. Um, so this is sort of just the tasting room, sort of day-by-day sort of thing. That, I, I hope they make millions and millions of dollars, but um, knowing, you know, and that's, I suppose it's possible.
How many people at the moment?
I was, uh, right, they had twenty-four, twelve, so thirty-six. So I think there's thirty-six, um, uh, parking spots that are gravel, I believe gravel, and then there'll be some field parking, uh, which is, which is baked in um, uh, for parking on grass, just sort of overflow stuff. So I think right now thirty-six sort of solid spots. Um, and then, uh, eight and five and twelve is a bunch more.
Has the, uh, fire department gotten a copy of this to look at it?
No, they have not, um, but they will. Um, I think, uh, in my opinion, I think we could probably get through neg deck, uh, maybe next week, uh, if the board was amenable. But again, I don't see anything triggering, um, you know, the floor, fawn, or noise, smells, that, you know, that kind of thing, traffic.
They need to turn south and north on that, maybe there?
Yep, yep.
That's the DOT will do.
Yeah, and DOT's watch, we'll watch that. Yeah.
And, um, utilities coming into the property?
I believe the utilities are coming in from the south end. Uh, I think they're up to the, one of the, one of the, um, isn't there a shed over here that has electric in it?
No, there's no structures on the property. There used to be a house in the.
Right here.
Corner there. Um, I think the power's gonna come almost a straight cut from the middle of the left screen, straight up that way.
Okay.
Yeah, right where the cursor is.
Okay.
There is a note, Scott, note one on that drawing.
Okay.
What, what's it say, John?
It just says, uh, underground utilities have not been shown before any site evaluation preparation of design documents or excavation is to begin.
There's nothing there.
The location of underground utilities should be verified by the proper utility companies.
Okay.
We have, um, our planned electrician has met with, uh, Central Hudson, uh, preliminary meeting to see if there's a pole right there that might need a pole on the other side of the guy wire, but it's kind of the, the most direct shot for us, and they're kind of an easy place to tap in right there.
Okay.
The south part of the property would be just aesthetic, not even aesthetic, but really difficult in the contour and everything.
Uh, uh, one thing, um, that Patty and I discussed, uh, which we mentioned at the last meeting, was the fence around the pond. We didn't want any little kids wandering down the hill as mommy and daddy are, you know, chugging, chugging stuff back. Uh, so that is shown here now.
Well, you gotta worry about mommy and daddy going over that fence.
Yeah, you know what?
Too.
It's.
Oh, good. That's, as people do.
That's right.
So that's all I know at the moment.
The tasting room is one floor?
One floor.
One floor, yep.
Uh, we were, we didn't get it today, but Mike Tenny from the DOT said he was gonna send a letter, but it didn't come before I left, so.
Yeah, the, the conceptual email I saw was like, it's not, it's a non-issue. Uh, they don't anticipate, you know, um, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cars a day. Um, you know, if they anticipate three hundred cars, cars a day, it'd be, I, I imagine that's a good day. Um, and it'll be no impact over, you know, the course of nine, ten hours.
Try to structure based in so that, uh, customers have enough time, so you make reservation, you're there for X amount, so there's, but it's not like an event where everyone's kind of pulling in at the same time, at the same time.
So you, have you asked Paul to draft the neg decorating?
I have not, but, yeah, I discussed, um, I wanted to talk to the board. Uh, the neg deck will help them, cause they need Seeker as part of the grant.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
It will help them as to.
We can have that, that by next week, the neg tech?
Uh, we could do that, too.
Yeah, I think I was gonna say, um, yeah, if he can get it to us, that'd be great. We can have it and we'll set it up for next week. All right?
Easily.
We're, we're all good with that, everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah? Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks again.
Thank you, Sue.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Who's staying? Are you staying?
I'm staying, I'm next.
You're pulling Patty is what you're doing right now?
I am.
Okay, next is John Jacobs Subdivision, one eleven South Street. Updated plans were circulated to the board. Um, speak to that one too, if you don't mind?
We're, she's, she is, uh, she's here as, as representation.
So she's not gonna, well, then I'll let, ask you to.
I would call it eye candy, but maybe that's inappropriate. It's nice to see you, sis. Um, so this is, as you know, uh, we, we've, we've reviewed this before. The application is off South Street. There was a question about, uh, DEC and wetlands. Uh, they have since gotten the DEC sign-off, um, on the plan. So, uh, I think that was the last sort of outstanding piece for this board. Um, I can't think of anything else, um.
There were comments from Andy Hearn.
There were? Okay, what do you got?
August twenty-first. You don't have a copy?
I don't have them handy. You got them?
And it's mostly engineering.
That's the worst.
So we got the DEC permit. Uh, Matt did the SWP.
Yep.
Which was required. We have what else do we need? Provide bulk zoning information for each proposed lot, which we have now added to the map.
Yep.
The northern cricket frog, that's in, covered in the DEC permit. Um, we need a common driveway agreement, which we will get, but I think that was really it.
Is this right next to Apple Greens, or is this? I'm just wondering where I see Lands of Roar here, it's, I'm just trying to figure out exactly where it is.
Yeah.
You know, I'm laughing. It's to the north. How many balls are you losing to property? Oh, I'm gonna go there again. That is, okay, they are next to. Wasn't the other property that they added the accessory building also next door to the golf course?
The sister.
Yes.
That's right, that was the sister. Yes, it is.
There's a lot of next door names.
Yeah. Anything from staff? You got anything, Christian?
I had a couple of comments, in addition to Andy's, uh, comments there. Like to understand like what the design basis is for the culverts that are underneath the road portion, or the driveway portion that goes across the wetlands there. Uh, they're showing a couple arch pipes, just like to know how those were sized. Um, obviously knowing that the DEC has looked at this, I don't know if they looked at it from a hydrologic or hydraulic standpoint. Um, I looked briefly at the DEC permit. There appear to be a couple of conditions in there regarding, uh, covenants for driveway easements and things like that. Pertaining specifically to the, just make sure that whenever you draw up your language for the, the common drive, that those DEC things are incorporated into that.
Yep.
Um. Has the fire department weighed in on that common driveway? Do you know, Dave?
No.
Cause there's a couple portions that, what's, what's the maximum grade, grade for a drive? Was it twelve percent? Fifteen, okay. Uh, they just need to weigh in on the, the geometry of the, you know, whether or not they can get a vehicle around that. And also, for the section of the driveway that go, that where those arch pipes are, just might wanna check those, cause it doesn't look like there's enough cover. They wanna make sure that those pipes don't get crushed if they're loaded by a heavy vehicle. And of course you need a basic SWP, uh, you need OPRHP sign-off for that. Also kinda health department approval.
That was submitted, um, the beginning of August, so we're waiting on that.
The health department, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two turnarounds here. Pullovers.
Oh, and also, did we identify any, uh, steep slopes on this property? It's not.
Good golf course, it, it could have been a good piece of golf course.
Okay. That's all I had. Anyone else on the board?
I'm good with this.
Greg, John, Bill?
This next to the, the other Indole property, is that what I'm thinking of, across the street? He's on the, but I thought he had a piece of land.
This is on the other side.
So I thought he had a piece of land on that.
This is well, well north of that?
Yeah.
East river side.
Those are the two turnarounds or pullovers so other cars can get past them on the driveway? How long is that entire driveway? Holy Moses.
But that's why they were.
No, I, I know, yeah, I realize that, yep. Definitely fire department chiming in on this one too, just to make sure they're good. All right?
Yeah, just, definitely be just very good.
Okay, good. Anybody else? Anything? No? So you got a little bit of homework on this one? Not much?
Not bad.
Yeah.
Great.
I think we're good. We're all good?
So neg deck, not for next?
I think we'll do neg deck, well, not for, um.
We'll do that next week, right?
And then neg deck at the, at that.
At that, just before the meeting? All right, we can do that. So next, next week we'll set the public hearing for Oc- October twenty-third or whatever it was, right? Yes.
At.
At the October.
October, okay.
That'll, that'll give you time to put all the, those missing.
Hey, great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Good night. So are we good, or is that next one Dakota Field Properties? They're not here today. So. I don't remember. Did you also get the comments back on the one property for the, um, the, was it the five lots they were converting? They were long strip lots that they were doing? Oh, what was that property called?
Yeah.
You did get them, right? Yeah, I know they're not here today, but. I didn't remember that one.
You see, um, this, this is shed.
Oh, yeah, they have.
Oh, yes, yes, now I remember, yeah. We were worried about the other building too, right? Yeah. Okay, all right, well, they're not here, so. Sir, you're here for anything, just to observe? How'd you like it? There you go. There you go.
Riveting.
We'll do the next one. So, so again, like I said to guys, I, and I'm gonna just say this only because I know in the county meeting, and I think that we should try and get in our time for, um, updating our classes, continued education. It does a lot of things for us. It keeps us pretty much on spot on certain things. Um, sometimes if you're paying attention, you're gonna learn it and you're gonna know what you're talking about when they come across the table. Uh, the other thing is, is even at the last one, I think it was Freddie, John and myself, they were saying that you have to have four hours a year.
It's what?
It's four. It's four year, four out, four, per credits, per year, and you have to have it, and the, at the one meeting we went to, and it was requirement for planning and zoning to have to have those. John was there, Fred was there, and they said it. So, I think in order for you to be, um, you know, acknowledged to go on for a reappointment, you, you need to have those classes. It's, and it helps. It doesn't.
It's a condition to stay on the board.
It is a condition to stay on the board. There is no real enforcement to it that we see, but if you're not keeping up with it, I guess the board could make a.
I would just say there's online training that's free.
Yeah.
You can log on anytime with the New York Plant Federation, so you don't have to leave your house.
Yeah.
There are legal benefits to the town as well, if you're all paid in your credits, somebody have challenges, a decision. Say no, our board is up to date, fully accredited.
Everybody's not here yet for the meeting too, so it's not, it's, I mean, I really would have loved for Franco and for Lambros to be here, cause